I assume we would hope so.
We're getting paid double today.
Oh, we're on. Well, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the July twenty-seventh meeting of the Moscow Public Works and Finance Committee. This also will take up the agenda of the Admin Committee this afternoon. Going to start off with our City Supervisor on my far left, Gary Redner. On my immediate left is Councilmember Art Betke, Councilmember Walter Steed, and myself, Wayne Kraus. First item, approval of the Public Works Finance Committee meeting minutes of July thirteenth, of which I was not present, but you two were.
Yes, we were. And there was one change that was made and put out earlier today to add a little language in the report item. And with that, I would recommend approval.
So would I.
Okay. Minutes are approved with the change. Second item, third quarter financial report. Don Palmer. Hello, Don.
How you doing? Here to talk about the third quarter financial report. This is for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. We've had three quarters of revenues and expenditures. Some of those because of accruals haven't been realized yet. One is liquor taxes, but the sales tax, those sorts of things won't come in until the end of July. So revenues for the general fund are at sixty-six percent. Construction revenues will start to peak up a bit, although some of those revenues are above our expectations now. Salaries and benefits, we're at sixty-six percent. We have twenty-six pay periods, of which there's one extra pay period that gets coming up to realize the twenty-sixth one in the remaining last quarter. So that's why you see payroll consistently below the seventy-five percent threshold. In terms of other revenues, parks and recreation, we're at seventy-one percent. Majority of that is transfers in. And then user fees, the swimming pools is starting to pick up by this time with pool passes. MSD is the Moscow School District Committee Playfields. A lot of that is the transfers between the school district and ourselves, and the operations of that is just starting to get started and not reflective in this particular budget. I want to note that there's a couple errors that we will fix. One of those is here, there's no percentage, and the other one is in the sanitation fund payroll. They're flipped, and then we'll fix those before the next council report. For whatever reason, I missed that.
It does stand out, doesn't it?
It does. And I just happened to notice as I'm walking in the door, and I should have noticed it beforehand. With regards to the arts fund, we're right on track with revenues. The farmer's market is starting to pick up. It's a majority part of that arts revenue. And part of the reason the budget's higher, and we never expend that part, is the one percent art, public art. It's set in reserve funds, and it's set therefore direction to be expended. And until that happens, that budget has the appropriation level, but not the expenditure. Water revenue is fairly stable at this point. We usually get the base fees. By this time in June, we have not seen the revenues pick up in consumption, albeit June was a hot month, as we all know. So we're starting to see those revenues pick up higher than... Yeah, and so it's a little different than last previous year's June's. So you'll see revenue slightly higher than normal in that area. It's at sixty-three percent. I didn't check to see what revenues would have been last year, but it's probably a few percent higher than what would have been at this time. Salaries, everything in water fund and sewer enterprise funds are tracking right on. The sewer fund debt service payments have all been made by this timeframe. And then we get into the capital funds. The revenues for construction funds are basically transfers from the operating funds into the capital funds. And then the sewer expenditures, or I mean, the expenditures for the miscellaneous funds are also the capital funds. And the only one to mention there is probably the Hamilton, which is the Moscow last payments of the Moscow Playfields, and the grant projects for sidewalks and road projects that were sent at the five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And other than that, the good news is that we're twenty-eight million five in revenue and under expended by twenty-five point six, which is pretty common for this time of year in the third quarter, and still yet seasonal activity is about to happen. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer you.
Go ahead, Walter.
I presume on the second page, Don, the enterprise fund salaries at a hundred and twelve percent is a function of that flip, those flip numbers you were talking about.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
Okay.
We'll fix that.
And then in the nineteen twelve center operations expense, boy, this is small print, is only sixty percent. And revenues is seventy-one percent. That's not a seasonal thing. Why would it?
I have to go back and look at the appropriations for the nineteen twelve.
I mean, those just happen, don't they?
The transfers is what is the nineteen twelve. They're consistent, so they're right on track. There's a little bit of miscellaneous revenue in the nineteen twelve. But for the majority of the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that's come into that fund is all transfers from the general fund. So then you're asking the question about what is the appropriations for the operations piece.
Seventy-five percent of the year gone, the question is why are we only at sixty percent on operations for nineteen twelve?
Yeah, and I'll look into that if you'd like, and shoot everybody an email.
We still have a contingency that's applied in nineteen twelve.
I can't remember, Gary. Is that, that would be what it would be then, because we don't expend a contingency. I just don't have that memory to go back and look at that.
And the three of us were talking before the meeting about the seasonality of so many of the accounts. But a couple of them that I was looking at, I didn't think had any seasonality. The second question would be the transit center? With revenues running thirty-four percent and operations nineteen percent?
Yeah, this is the first year, full year, that we had an actual budget for the transit center. And so when that, that was just an estimate at the time that we created the budget. And so we had no idea, no track record. And so we came up with that revenue and expenditure stream. Now, Gary and I have talked about some things, what happens if. And so, because the contract reads about historical expenditures and budgeting forward. So that one's going to be a bit difficult to review in the future. But that was the first year, and so that's the reason that's lower. And that's been tracking pretty much just whatever the thing's going on. So Gary can add to that if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, you do have a sixty-five hundred dollar contingency in nineteen twelve, and there was some capital in there, too, for some replacement lightheads. So that's probably accounted against that percentage. I'm good.
You good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll get those two things fixed, and we'll get it back to you.
Thank you, Don.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, what's our next thing on screen lock? Conservation Public Information Education Contract presented by Nicole Baker. Hi, Nicole.
Hi. Well, as you all know, the city of Moscow contracts Ploes Claywater Environmental Institute to do our, to help assist with our public information and education outreach for the conservation program. We've been working with PCEI since two thousand and five. So I'm asking that you accept the contract that we would be using for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. The only change you're going to see from our current contract is that we did add a pre and post quiz for each classroom. I thought this would be a good idea for us to evaluate the program. Currently, for each, we go to sixty, or PCEI goes to sixty-three different classroom visits. And that reaches, this last year, about nine hundred and ninety students in the Moscow School District. And that's six different grades, and they go to several different schools within the school district. So right now, there's evaluations that are completed by the student, or excuse me, by the teachers or the teacher's aides. And they let us know, we liked it, it did work with our curriculum.
We've seen those before.
Yes, so I would like, we're going to still do those, but I would like to add a pre and post quiz where they can ask questions for the, that's appropriate to the age group. And we did a trial run for the ninth grade, and that, we'll be reporting that to the community in this upcoming newsletter. And that's just going to let us know, what did the students, did they learn something from it? So was there what they knew about our aquifer, or their impression on our water resource and where we're at? Did that change after the class? So that is the big change. We're going to still do the four quarterly newsletters. The number of classroom visits will be the same. And then the cost is increased by five hundred and ten dollars.
Okay. Of course, PCI is good with the changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Walter?
Yeah, and we had one minor change in the term of the contract to make it match the fiscal year. So I'm good with consent agenda on this, if y'all are...
Just one little curiosity question. How long has this program existed?
Since two thousand and five.
Ten years.
I'm good with it.
All right. This committee will recommend approval and put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next one, let's see, is Lisa here? Yes, she is. Lisa Anderson be presenting the updated state local agreement for construction of the middle schools, SR two S safety improvements, safer out to school. Hi, Alicia.
Hello. So last round of committee meetings, we presented a different contract to you that was provided to us in error by the Idaho Transportation Department. The main difference in the contract before you now, and the one that was submitted to you previously, is ITD will be bidding out the project on our behalf and managing it for us, and that was originally how it was to be designed, but the wrong contract was submitted to us for signature. We were under a very tight deadline, and so we had the city attorney review it, city engineer, and also Gary Redner, the City Supervisor, and the mayor then was able to go ahead and sign it. And so today, we're here to ask for ratification of that signature and the approval of the contract that we had previously presented to you.
Gary?
Yeah, talking to Rod, his indication was that the, it didn't change materially, the contract. It was just putting some things that weren't as explicit in there, that the contract will be, or the project will be administered by ITD and that sort of thing. So rather than lose our funding on it, it was determined to go ahead, have the mayor authorize it, and then ask for ratification today.
I was just curious, where are the other contract that we originally signed? Did they send that to us? Did they just send it through?
They called it before signature.
Yeah, we didn't sign it. But yeah, it was a standard contract that we'd always used with them. They changed their processes.
It didn't let us know, Joe.
Sometimes that happens.
It was a little bit of a difference between the contract being drafted at the local level versus the state level, so.
Okay.
So displacing our contributions with labor, does that mean we actually come up with cash payment instead? Is that how I'm reading this?
No, this was the original amount that was budgeted. It's actually a little bit under what we had anticipated to be submitted for match. And it is in the budget line item to be expended for this year.
Cool.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, obviously, we'll recommend approval, and that can go on the consent agenda, too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Ray.
Could say no and let the mayor figure out how to get out of it.
There you go.
Oh, well.
Michael's going to present a, it's a proposed amendment of Title Four, Chapter Three, to allow ground floor residential uses in the central business district. Right?
Go back to the CLG, or I can certainly present that one.
No, you skip one.
Skip it back to the other one, CLG grant. That's the first one. Then you're going to be on the next one.
Sure, okay.
CLG grant support the Idaho's Heritage Conference.
Okay.
We know what you meant.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen. We have a grant application for a two thousand and fifteen CLG grant in support of the two thousand and fifteen Idaho's Heritage Conference, which is going to be in Moscow September twenty-second through twenty-fourth of this year. And so in last year, we had submitted a letter of intent to Idaho's Heritage Trust to host the conference this year. This is the second time that the conference will be hosted. Last, two thousand and thirteen, was the first Idaho's Heritage Conference, which occurred down in Boise. So we're impressed to be able to get the second annual conference. The CLG grant is for thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's in order to help fund part of the conference, but also to be able to send seven historic preservation commissioners to attend the conference. And so the total will be thirty-five hundred dollars. The grant requires a fifty percent in-kind match, which will be provided with volunteer labor. We've had a local planning committee meeting every month for the last year to help plan the conference. And so that'll completely be in volunteer labor for the match requirement, so.
No cash.
No cash.
Do we know what the total attendance might be?
Yeah, it'll bring somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred people in town for those three days. So it'll, you know, boost the local economy. There'll be four tracks. It's archaeology, museums, preservation, as well as a Main Street track. So we'll have all those people from the state converging on Moscow for those three days, so.
Sounds like a good deal to me.
Yeah, well, they, I know that the Moscow Historical Preservation Commission has been looking, wanting to do this for quite some time, and so they were pretty excited to get, be able to land this in Moscow this year. So it is, it is going to bring a little help to the economy. Walter, do you have any comments on it?
Nope. I just see Gina grinning over the one to two hundred people coming to town.
Very good. Well, then this committee will also recommend acceptance of the two thousand and fifteen CLG grant. Put it on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now the one I wanted to get to.
All right.
All right. Change the Title Four, Chapter Three, to allow ground floor residential uses in the central business district.
Okay. This will be coming before council on August third for a public hearing. But this is a proposed amendment to the central business zoning district, and this is to allow some ground floor residential through a conditional use permit. And so just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the proposed amendment. Staff was recently approached by a building owner within the central business zoning district, kind of the north edge of Main Street, the CJ's Building. Was interested in converting the entire building to residential apartments. And within the central business zoning district, you're allowed to have residential behind or above commercial uses, so they, in a manner that they don't interrupt commercial frontage. And so as long as there was some type of commercial component, they'd be able to do that. But the building owner was not interested in doing any type of commercial component at the front of the building adjacent to Main Street. And so staff had taken a look at this request and also looked at the entire central business district and noticed that there are some, several residential uses which are located on the edge of the district that are currently not commercial. They're houses that originally constructed as residential uses and still remain that way. There are a number of buildings that kind of go back and forth between commercial uses and residential uses. And then you also have some existing buildings that we had noticed that may not really work for kind of that ground floor commercial retail uses within central business. And looking at the central business zone outlined in red are those properties which are either, you know, may not work for a commercial use on the ground floor or are currently residential uses. And so the majority of them are currently residential. I did highlight the CJ's Building here, which I'll show you in a minute, may not be a good fit for that ground floor retail. So looking at the facade of this building, there are a number of these buildings which may be a challenge. You can see that the...
No, there's no at sidewalk grade frontage. It's either half a floor up or maybe half a floor down.
Correct. You know, it was originally constructed as Elks Temple. So it was never really a, you know, traditional David's Building where you have the ground floor retail. And so, you know, a bit of a challenge when you, when you're saying that, well, it needs to be some type of commercial on the ground floor, and we want it to be retail. And so you have the half floor here, and then you either go up or down the stairs as soon as you enter the building. So you have some challenges there. This is right across the street. Originally, I think Hotel Del Norte was what I heard, currently being used as residential uses. You could maybe convert it to a professional office type use, but you may have an issue with ADA conversion, you know, getting in the front door to meet ADA requirements. Another view of that building there directly across the street. And then we have, these are also in central business intersection of A and Jackson. I think a couple of them were recently torn down, but they're, I think this whole block on that east side of Jackson is residential. And this is Tim Gressbach's law office, and this is on Seventh Street, right next to the Ploes Ocularium. And this building's kind of gone back and forth between residential and commercial, professional office. They had ended up going to the Board of Adjustment, received a variance to allow ground floor residential. And so for a time, it was just a single-family dwelling. Like I said, it's kind of gone back and forth. Most recently, Tim Gressbach's put a substantial investment in the property, and now it's, now it's a professional office for his law firm. Just another view. We've got the Ploes Ocularium, which really could go either way. Not a whole lot of off-street parking, mainly a professional office use. And then these are some buildings on Sixth Street that were used as appraisers' offices at one point in time, but more recently, I think they're currently being used as residential rentals. So what we're proposing to do is go into the central business code, and under conditional uses, you know, allow this to go before the Board of Adjustment as a conditional use. Insert residential uses located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses, with specific consideration given to preservation of retail frontages and/or suitability of building for ground floor commercial use. So we wanted to provide the Board of Adjustment some direction into areas where this would be suitable. So if the buildings like the Elks Temple and CJ's, where the building may just not be suitable for the ground floor commercial that you had intended, that's maybe further on down the street in the core of downtown, then they can take that into consideration. They can also take into consideration some buildings that are located on the periphery, like we've got a couple historic homes across the street from City Hall, which are in central business, that have always been used as residential. To take into consideration the retail frontages that are typically within downtown. And if it's going to be in an area like adjacent to Friendship Square, which may affect kind of the downtown retail core of the area, then maybe that it shouldn't be allowed to go completely residential. And so that's why we had inserted that language there to give the board some direction when they're reviewing ground floor residential uses. And then like I mentioned earlier, this would be reviewed via public hearing at the council's August third meeting, and I'd recommend forwarding it. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Walter?
So Mike, all of these places that you showed us, plus some others you didn't, going to have to go apply for a conditional use if this is adopted?
Well, they're legal non-conforming uses right now. They may have an issue.
Will they, can they just stay that way and not have to go apply for a conditional use permit?
Because they have an eighty percent structure.
And run the risk of being told, no, you can't?
Correct, yeah. I mean, they'd be legal non-conforming uses right now, so they'd be allowed to remain. The issue comes in with a sale, so if they sell the property to somebody else, a lot of banks won't lend on properties. They're not able to recoup their investment. And so if they say that, well, if it burns down to a certain extent or is destroyed, you can't build a single-family dwelling again, then you're going to have trouble financing that. Somebody goes in to refinance the property, they could have issues there as well. But they could alleviate that concern by going to the Board of Adjustment to get a conditional use permit. But that's not to say that they have to do that. It's just if they run into financing issues.
I understand what you're proposing, and I don't have any problem with it. I'm just looking to see that we don't create a lot of headaches or hoops to jump through for people that have been doing what they're doing for the last several decades.
Well, and there is a, the council could determine what they wanted to do with it. Assuming that they're operating there and it's been working, the conditions probably wouldn't be anything different than what they're doing right now. What does it cost to move forward with the conditional use permit, Mike?
We had upped our fee somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars.
So again, the only issue is, is if it gets destroyed, or if somebody's going through something where a finance, financier is going to want to have some independent, you know, knowing that they can do what they are doing legally in that location. So it seems like if they could do that, it's a good alternative, and this cleans it up for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it's giving them an alternative, because right now, say you had a single-family dwelling on the edge of the district. It burns down. Well, you can't rebuild it except for an allowed use within the zone. And so you would have to include some type of commercial component at the front of the building in order to rebuild your single-family dwelling. And so this gives people the opportunity of going, get a conditional use permit in order to rebuild what they currently have.
On the basis that we've always been a house, and we want to put it back as a house?
Correct, yeah.
So along with Walter's comment, then, is somebody that's already doing that wouldn't have to do anything right now. However, if the issue came up because of a rebuilding, because of an eighty percent loss or a sale, then the CUP could be applied for, and it would be the opportunity for them to receive it without much of an issue.
Correct, yeah.
Do you have anything, Art?
Yeah, just one. You indicated that most of these non-conformities and potential conversions exist around the edge of the central business core. But do we need to have some kind of a more specific definition of what's the central commercial core? Because that becomes kind of nebulous. What's the commercial core, and next door, is that not commercial core?
Yeah, we had originally had primary retail areas within the definition there. And the Planning and Zoning Commission chose to take that out because they wanted to leave it up to the Board of Adjustment in order to determine really where the primary retail frontages were within the central business district.
It gets a little fuzzy there, and so that's the only concern I would have is trying to figure out where that gray area between commercial core and not commercial core actually occurs. Or is that something best left to the argument of the applicant and the Board of Adjustment?
Well, I think it should be, yeah, the Board of Adjustment to make that decision based upon staff's recommendation.
Yeah, it is one of those, that's almost performance zoning, where you're trying to figure out where the best use is and whether that fits in that area or not.
Yeah, and they, you know, really just wanted to leave it up to market forces, because that seems to be what's happening right now. You have these residential uses that are not the highest and best use that are located on the periphery of the district, and then so as our...
The uses that may not be the highest and best either.
And so, you know, as the downtown increases density or expands, then you just naturally have the market take over some of those uses. Maybe they go professional office. And so they wanted to leave it, you know, a little bit, let the market dictate what happens there.
So are there going to be some kind of parking requirements that are going to be, have to be followed in order to be able to convert something like that into residential use?
Parking requirements?
Parking requirements?
Central business is exempt from off-street parking.
So therein lies the rub, is you take a building like that, and then we all like to see the infill within the downtown area. We want to build out. But what happens if you have, all of a sudden, you have fifty units built within a structure that used to be commercial, and there's no designated parking for it? Does this then just create a bigger problem in the downtown parking area?
Well, the residents would either have to choose not to have a car. It's like the Moscow Hotel. A lot of them pay for city permits over in the Jackson Street Lot. And so maybe it's, you know, selling more permits to residents of those areas. I think it's underutilized, the parking lot at the northeast corner of Third and Jackson Street. And so that could be an option if there, you know, runs into an issue where there's parking happening in adjacent neighborhoods.
My question essentially was, parking will not be a consideration if the CUP is being considered? Because it's not a requirement for the downtown business district?
It's not a requirement. Board of Adjustment could still impose some amount of parking through a conditional use permit process in order to mitigate, you know, type of residential development, so.
Per, if I may, per the ordinances we now have, the only additional parking would be for that commercial frontage space, because they're allowed to have residential behind and above anyway.
Good point.
Correct.
Yes, yes, it's a problem, but we're only adding that frontage on the ground floor as residential to what we've already signed on to.
Yeah, and if I can, and that's always a concern, it should be a concern. But, you know, most places that have significant residential parking in the downtown core don't have... don't have significant parking requirements. I mean, that's one of the reasons.
You mean significant residential uses?
You bet. And the whole reason is, you're not supposed to have to need a car down there. That's part of the deal about living downtown.
Yeah, I did a tour of the McConnell Building with the fire department the other night and realized there are thirty-eight apartments above Mingles.
Yeah.
I mean, I knew they were apartments, but I didn't know there were thirty-eight up there.
It was a bunch, it was a bunch. Okay, well, we will forward this on to the council for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Kevin Lilly is presenting the Water Department issue with the Southeast Reservoir Emergency Power Professional Services Agreement, joined by Tyler Palmer.
I'm just here because I heard it'd be entertaining. Kevin's got some jokes.
When I do that, you've taught me.
There's going to be a joke.
This is a standard design agreement. This one is for, excuse me, this one is for the generators that need replacing at the Water Department facility and at the Southeast Reservoir for the booster station there. We're intending to hire Trindera of Court Lane to do the design work for us. Pretty straightforward contract. Sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars is a not-to-exceed amount.
You or me?
Go ahead.
It's stated in the CCSR that the existing generators are near the end of their useful life.
Define useful life.
What does that mean?
Well, with backup gen-
Now, we know what Tyler's.
That's half of these.
There's your joke, Tyler.
There we go, yeah, there it is. You know, the generators and the use of these generators, it's, you know, it's not like a backpack generator that you might use with your tent trailer when you go camping. The ramifications of that goes down is you might not have a microwave on your camping trip. With these, we're talking about, this is the only backup generator that we have at a water production facility in the city of Moscow, the one. And then the other one is an important backup generator for the Southeast Reservoir. And so we have, it's not a good idea to replace these generators when they've already fallen apart. It's a generator that's an emergency use generator that, that if we have a lengthy power outage in the city of Moscow, this is the only source of water that we'll have. And so we try and keep these running. We test them every year, you know, we need these to work if they need to work. And so, for example, the number, unit number one thirty-six, which is the generator at the Southeast Reservoir, that's a nineteen seventy-five unit. We can't get parts to replace it, to repair it. We can't keep it running. If something significantly goes wrong, we're scrounging parts from all over the country and paying dearly, trying to find these parts for these units. You know, it's the third oldest unit in the entire fleet, and the other two-
We bought it new in seventy-five.
And the other two units are older, are obsolete. It's the fire truck that we use for show, the twenty-one Pierce lines. Well, we, the one thirty-six, the seventy-five generator, I believe it was new. But one forty, which is a nineteen eighty-four generator, we purchased used when we got it. And so that was used when we got it. And so both of these are just, you know, they're obsolete. We can't get parts, we can't keep them running. And so, and they're pretty critical, a pretty critical component to our infrastructure.
So after we get the, if we issue this contract, then we get the design work and assistance with acquisition and installation. But then the cost of the generators per se comes on from the capital funds that we already have stored up for this use, right?
Right, that'll come through, yeah, through the budget, yeah.
How many hours would you say are on these?
Oh, I think, I think I may have that for you here.
You only, while you're looking that up, you only test these once a year?
We do, well, they run, they're set up to do automatic running, and so they'll run on their own. And then we, the mechanics will go out and do a complete-
How often?
Weekly, they come on. And so they'll weekly run, and then they're tied into the SCADA system. So if there are any errors within that weekly run, it'll report it to us. And then we do a physical, top-to-bottom check of these every year.
Similar to the way the one outside of City Hall kicks on every week as well.
We're not going there.
No.
I don't have the hours here.
You know, I can, I can see where, I can see where we're at with this. They don't have a lot of hours on them.
No, I mean, they're emergency backup.
This is, this is the same thing, and I, and you can go back and take somebody that had a nineteen seventy-five Mercury that only has twenty thousand miles on it, been garaged all the time, and treated with kid gloves. And you think you've got something that is really a great daily driver until you take it out and find out that all the seals are dried out and its transmission suddenly isn't going to hold up to steady driving. And I think this is exactly the same type of issue that we're having. I was concerned that maybe these generators were like, oh, they're ten years old and it's time that we probably replace them. They're a lot older than that.
Yeah, these are some old generators.
So I'm good with it.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, well, in that particular case, we're going to recommend approval of the Design Services Contract with Trindera Engineering in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we can probably put that on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Hey, great.
Good stuff.
All right, White Curtis. This is a lease agreement between the city of Moscow and Sherman Clyde.
Oh, good afternoon. As you know, out on West Palouse River Drive, the city has forty-four acres that, of course, we purchased it to try to put some ball fields on there. And during the timeframe that we were going through all the planning process, Mr. Clyde, whom we purchased the property from, he had continued to farm it, to take care of it, keep the weeds down, all that kind of stuff. And over the years, when that project finally died, and the property was just there, he continued to farm it. And of course, he does make money off of that. The original agreement was that he would do that until we got the fields developed. It was just supposed to be kind of a temporary thing. Well, it turned out to not be temporary, and we just felt it was the responsible thing for the city to recoup some, some costs off the revenue that's generated off of that. The northern piece, the part that's adjacent to West Palouse River Drive, it was used for hay. But we've also now, we also have a cyclocross course on there. So it's sort of an interesting animal there. Can't really farm it. He can still cut some hay off of it, even though this year he was unable to, but he should be able to next year. But that's for our sake, that's more of a weed, you know, a weed control thing for us and fire. And, but the northern piece, or the southern piece, I'm sorry, the twenty-eight acres is still tillable, and he is still farming that. After speaking to him, he agreed to seventy dollars an acre, which I think comes out to about nineteen hundred and sixty dollars a year. It's not a fortune by any means, but it does help, you know, recoup some revenues that are generated off of that. Plus, it's less land that we have to take care of at the same time.
Go ahead.
Gary, you own a farm, I think?
Yes, sir, Gentleman Ranch.
Do you?
One could call it a boondoggle, yeah.
I wouldn't, no, I wasn't and didn't and wasn't, and I'm not a farmer anymore than I'm a P and Z guy, Art. Do you, do you lease some of your land to a farmer to farm? And is this seventy dollars per acre a reasonable number? Because I have no idea.
Yeah, usually the lease is a function of the productivity of the land, the type of crops you can grow on it, how long it is. This is a year-to-year lease, so anytime the city wants to not do it, they can. Seventy dollars an acre is probably a little on the lighter side. But on the, on the other part of it, he'll be cutting hay around a cyclocross track. It's not full hayland. I don't know, is he growing crop on the rest of it, Dwight?
Yes.
Okay.
And the cyclocross acreage is included in this number?
No.
So the cyclocross-
That's just a weed deal.
That's just-
Twenty acres, I misunderstood.
It's different, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a little on the light side. But again, it's a short-term contract. He's been doing it, he's been doing it year to year because of the uncertainty about moving ahead. Usually leases are anywhere from a five to seven year. So the farmer has a little longevity to recoup some money.
Would a longer lease get a higher price for the taxpayers?
It might, it might. I don't think that was ever negotiated or discussed with Mr. Sherman.
I think I'm the one that brought this up at some point. Something happened and I asked, I asked about it about a couple of years ago. I'm not sure why it's taken so long to get this to us, but, but.
He was in Hawaii most of the year. He was, he was out of country.
Trust me, his cellphone rings in Hawaii, Dwight. It really does. It just struck me that we've, and I know Sherman, I like Sherman, I got no problem with Sherman. Great guy, all those good things, but it's not his land. It's the citizens of Moscow's land. And if it's being farmed with some level of profit, I, it struck me that they ought to get something out of it. And I had no idea what.
No, I think, certainly don't have a problem with leasing it out. It is, and again, it is only twenty-eight acres as well. So, I mean, there's a whole lot of things that go into it. I can't say you couldn't get a little more money out of it, but I don't think it's going to be significant.
Well, I can tell you that the Elks Lodge owns eighty additional acres beyond the golf course, of which some sixty of that acres is farmed by, right? And it's just about that figure is about what the Elks gets for that.
Because I have, I have no idea.
I checked with several farmers
Five dollars one way or the other.
In various parts of the region, and it does depend on where you're at within the region and the, you know, the different lands are produced differently.
Productivity of the land is.
Yes, and this particular land, once we removed the berm down there, he is now also forced to plant in the fall. Because in the springtime, you know, I mean, they have several acres there that they can't get to. If he somehow misses the fall, he could lose anywhere up to seven acres of plantability. And, but, you know, he was, he was okay with this. I couldn't, well, let me rephrase that. He wasn't happy about it to begin with, but, but he was, he was accepting of it. Some, some farmers, they go on a percentage basis, you know, a percentage of the profits. And this one just seemed to be the cleanest, and at least the one that relied on the least amount of wondering what they really got, kind of a thing.
Variation.
Yes, and so, and it does, it is year-to-year, but we have it as a ten-year lease.
With automatic renewals unless canceled?
Yes.
Well, I just think it's incumbent upon the council to get something for the taxpayers' land.
Well, let's not forget, though, that if he wasn't farming it, then we'd be, we'd have an additional expense in weed abatement and maintenance of that particular property, keeping the weeds down.
Same argument that farmers have for, for growing crops on county highway right of way.
Valid.
We keep, we keep, we keep the weeds down for you.
They got a point.
A question about the agreement, if I may. This is for, in the term, Dwight, it says between January one, twenty fifteen, and December thirty-one, twenty fifteen. And then the sum of seventy dollars per acre. So we're going to get a, we will get a payment for the calendar year fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, with the expectation that it just picks up and rolls into next year?
Yes.
Okay. We're not getting rich, don't, don't mean we are.
I'm good with going into the farming business?
Sure you are. All right, we can move that on to the, you got to go on the regular agenda, can I go on?
Don't go in consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, and Gary, I guess you're going to talk to us now about Pullman Moscow Regional Airport funding the transfer resolution?
Yeah, what you have in your packet is a draft resolution, complimentary to a resolution which was passed by the Pullman City Council last week. When Don and I met with Pullman's city supervisor and finance director, what we wanted to make sure of is how these funds, the funds that were generated into match, who was going to be responsible for accounting for them, so on and so forth. And what it came up with is that the city of Pullman, excuse me, which is the, essentially the bookkeeper or the treasurer for the airport, manages those funds, budgets for those funds, and provides those services to the airport. So, city of Pullman agreed to set up their own separate fund that will receive these, it'll be a construction fund, if you will, to receive the match monies. And that's what, at our meeting last Wednesday night, that's in fact what Pullman said, was that they had approved moving, I think, six hundred thousand dollars into this fund that is set up specifically to transfer monies to the airport for the sole purpose of this particular project. We have a little bit different situation where we're transferring monies from the city of Moscow to the city of Pullman. Thereby, the city of Pullman then transfers them for the project for the airport. So we have kind of a two-step process. So what we wanted to do was to draft this resolution, which essentially says, we will, in accordance with our policy, the council's direction, collect this money from our treasury, send it to you for this sole purpose. You will use it for that sole purpose, or you will refund it essentially. So it's restricted use of funds.
And in that, it also states that we are entitled to full accounting of those funds upon a thirty-day notice.
Absolutely. And again, very similar to the one Pullman wanted as well. So it gives us the ability to monitor the funds that were participating with the airport. So this should be the last step for the mechanics of getting the process going subject only to the council's approval of the yearly budget.
All right. So that, as I was reading through it, I answered my own questions, so I'm-
Must be a really well-written resolution then.
Well, it had to do with the emphasis that it's an annual contribution. So there it is in number one, so I'm just looking at that.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Several things, of course.
Okay.
The cash flow, Gary.
Yes, sir.
We need to move the twenty fifteen, the Moscow fiscal year twenty fifteen, half million before September thirty of twenty fifteen.
Yes.
And that's because that's the first year of five, that a half million a pop.
Yes.
And we need to move the money.
Yes, sir.
My point being that the money's not needed by the city of Pullman yet. They, they've got a grant, but the funds are only needed when you're paying invoices subject to that grant. Now, our excess funds are parked somewhere at some interest. So the half, when half, when a half million moves out, that's a half million that we will, we will make no interest on. I realize interest nowadays isn't anything, but it's kind of like Sherman Clyde property. It's the principle of the line.
Yeah.
And then we will move another half million, I think y'all have said, really quickly, in fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Yes.
My question is, why really quickly?
Only if, when it's necessary.
Gone, we can't make any interest on it, even the one percent of whatever we get. And they don't need it yet because there's no invoices to pay.
Yeah.
So talk, talk about the, the-
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm working from experience where
Sure.
Communities I work for are able to draw funds from USDA Rural Development through a construction account with a bank. And they only draw them when they've already got an invoice in hand and it needs to be paid. And then they approve drawing it so that the interest expense to the city is kept to a minimum.
And you're exactly right. The FY two thousand and fifteen funds, again, Don may be able to tell you, I mean, we could carry those funds over, I suppose, and open up the budget in two thousand and sixteen.
I didn't even suggest that, but I am certainly questioning twenty sixteen.
And you're-
And subsequent year.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And that's the way it will happen, is when we made those comments, it was to let our partners know that we have that capacity. So if it was necessary, if for some reason we had the bills, that we would have that million dollars in that range, fifteen and sixteen. But no, my understanding is, is that they will have a call, and Don will respond to that call as necessary, up to the capacity the council authorized.
Now, when, now when we are borrowing money from ourselves, I, the enterprise funds or the payroll services fund, that may be a, an interest wash. In other words, we're paying it out of one pocket and receiving it in the other. I hadn't talked that through with Don. But I, but I think the cash flow to Pullman shouldn't have to happen until either we're up some, against some fiscal year cash movement situation like fifteen.
Sure.
Or they need the money-
Yeah.
To cover invoice.
And to tell you the truth, the mechanics of that I've left to Don, I'm presuming that's the way, and I will certainly ask him tomorrow. Uh, but that was my understanding, is that as those funds were expended and city of Pullman would send out their request for reimbursement from the federal government, that at that point, we would have to come up with enough match to balance.
Cover the match side, have one half of the match side.
Exactly, and you're right about the interest rate, the LGIP, local government investment pools, like at a quarter of a percent or something.
Not much money, but it's a-
But you gotta keep a liquid, is why we do it.
I, I think Walter's got a really good point, and, and if we have to transfer the money from the fifteen fund, we have to do that.
Sure.
But the money is essentially just going and sitting, sitting in a coffee can until it has to, the money has to be taken out and spent.
I'd like to think the airport board's got an interest somewhere, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, that money should be able to sit somewhere and draw some interest.
Well, it'll sit, city of Pullman, I'm assuming with their, within their policies, will deal with their funding. But the issue, as Don's explained several times, you know, the liquidity gets you almost no interest. And if you need it, if you need to tap it to pay bills, Don keeps a lot of our city money in the LGIP because you can get it within a couple of days, and, but you're gonna pay that with the interest. He also has longer-term investments that pay as high as three or five percent on the long term.
Rock and roll.
Uh, but, no, you're exactly right, and that's, that's the, the way I believe that it will work, and I will check again with Don tomorrow and certainly have a, uh, an answer to you by council, but it'll be a demand. There's no, there was never any intent that Pullman would receive our cash, leave it in there, invest it, and take advantage of that investment. That was not, certainly not the intent at all, either by Pullman or by us.
I don't think there's any insinuation here that Pullman is taking advantage of anything.
We wouldn't have an opportunity to make our little bit of interest on it, if I may. In the wording, Gary, um, the second whereas-
Yes.
It, it says that the FAA has required the airport to relocate and realign the runway. That's not exactly accurate.
Only if we wanna keep commercial service, you're exactly right.
So could some language to that effect be in there, I mean?
I'll probably put in order to retain commercial air service.
Cause if, my understanding is, if it's not done, interstate aviation can still operate there.
Yep.
Uh, Switzer can still operate there, et cetera, it's just the commercial operation that the FAA, that's got the FAA-
Certainly.
-in twit.
I could put something in there.
Um, and then in the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, it talks about a half, the city of Moscow and Pullman each, uh, two hundred fifty, uh, two million five hundred thousand, to be budgeted and authorized over a five-year period. Is that language sufficient to the language you normally use?
Non-appropriation language?
Yes.
Yeah.
That, 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 that's what you said, yes.
Yeah, I went through it and, I mean, I could make it-
We cannot commit future councils.
Exactly, and that's why it says, subject to the budgeting of the annual budget.
Yeah, I think that's kinda covered down there in the number one.
Yeah.
So, so that language you feel is, is sufficient to, to the non-appropriation?
Yeah, this resolution cannot bind you to budgeting beyond the budget year.
Well, I think by state law, we could, could, could try it if we wanted to, but it wouldn't go very far.
Constitution, actually.
Oh, actually, okay, the constitution. Um, and then my last one is in the next-to-last whereas, where it states that both cities are confident that other governmental partners, educational institutions and private commitments will contribute the remaining. Is that appropriate wording for, for a resolution, quite frankly?
The, the way that, I mean, we call them whereas clauses, the formerly called recitals. What the intent is, is to try and look behind the actual body of the resolution, so you can get, we, we are lawyers, call legislative intent, what was the legislature thinking about? And that's why I have this, you try to put a logical set of statements in there that say, okay, well, now it makes sense why they're doing this. Did we need to put that in there? Probably not. However, uh, I think the council has said on a couple of occasions that with the representations that have been made, we're confident that, that our partners are going to step up. However, um, certainly nobody wants to put two-point-five million dollars, either Pullman or Moscow, into a project that, wow, we have no chance of getting more than that five million dollars, so we're not gonna be able to do the project. So this was felt to give a backdrop for the bodies, so that, okay, well, the council's willing to do the two-point-five because Pullman's doing it, and also because we believe these other folks are gonna step up.
Let me interject is, and I like that wording in there, because it's, it precludes this resolution that the council says, yes, we're gonna spend that money, and it says right in there that, under the assumption that, we're going to have other governmental and private funding. And if that funding never were to happen, then the strength of this resolution would not be as strong if that wording was not in there.
What, what, what does that mean, when the strength of the resolution?
You know, we always go back, we say, well, the council passed a resolution to do such and such. But there's, there's some assumptions that are made within that, and part of that is that, that second-to-last whereas of having, um, other agencies partnering in this, in this program.
And if they don't, or if they don't to the tune of-
Well, I suppose-
Whatever the number is, half a million dollar, I mean, five million dollars.
I suppose the bottom line would be, the council could say, you know what, we're not going to support that resolution any longer because the partnerships are not there.
I will take that bet. I believe they would.
Yeah.
I believe in for a nickel, in for a dime.
I think it's better to have that in there than not to have it in there.
Okay, well, I've got a problem with it, I mean, five, you know, five-sixths of the city council apparently is confident. I don't, I'm not, I'm sorry.
I understand.
If they do, they do, but they're not here yet. We started this a year ago, they didn't do it in their budget year that, that they've had. President Staben hadn't called me up and said, Walter, quit worrying about it, we're gonna put it in, hadn't happened.
Nope, that's true.
Um, I've got county commissioners telling me it's gonna be token. I presume Ed Switzer could write a check today if he wanted to, to my knowledge, he hadn't yet.
To my knowledge.
He very generously gave a whole lot of money to the WSU Medical School. So, you know, could, could, would. So I, yeah, I've just got prob, I've got problems with it.
I'm good with it, with the changes we've discussed.
Councilmember Jim Boland's in the audience, did you have any comments you wanted to make, Jim?
If you wanna go back to the-
You need to come up here, Jim.
Come up here if you wanna do it.
Unless you're just gonna nod and say, no, I don't have a comment.
Regarding the, the interest situation on the funds that we might send over there, I would, I would assume that the city of Pullman will invest that, and that would, uh, those funds would be part of the match at some point, if they were, if interest rates were reasonable, it would, might amount to something, probably isn't too material at this point, but I would think that they, that would happen.
And Don will certainly, again, he'll be there on Monday night and he'll have those answers.
A, as far as the, uh, other players being at the table yet, I, my opinion on that is that, uh, I, I think most of those people are hanging back to see exactly how much they have to put in, because we don't know how much the project's gonna cost at this point. And if the project comes in at eighty-nine million, then the amount that they would have to put up to meet the eight-point-one-two-five would be much less than it would be if it's a hundred and twenty million. And I think Ed Switzer's a businessman, and he's not gonna put any more money in than he has to. That's my opinion on it, so.
You know, here's, here's, here's an interesting question that I've thought of, and that is, so, city of Pullman and city of Moscow says, we're each gonna put in two and a half million. So we start accepting grants, and three years down the road, the city of Moscow's put all their money in, the city of Pullman's put all their money in, and we're not done yet. Is that when we finally look at the partners saying, okay, well now we'll step up the plate and we'll finish it?
That is-
That's where Walter's worried about, and I understand where that concern is coming from.
That, that certainly is not where Mayor Lambert and Mayor Johnson are going. The discussions that we've had, um, is that trying to get commitments for these funds as soon as we can. Um, their commitments are as good as the city of council's commitments, saying, okay, we like this project enough for two and a half million dollars in five-hundred-thousand-dollar increments over five years. We're looking for that same sort of, of commentary from them, and as, as Mayor Lambert indicated the other day, his con, conversations with President Staben are that, uh, they've got a half million dollars right now, or at least he's talked to him about that amount of money. WSU apparently has somewhere around a million dollars at this point. So all of those things are coming together, and the idea is to get all of those pledges, all of those commitments upfront, so that we're all sharing in this proportionally. This isn't just a city of Moscow Airport or a city of Pullman Airport.
And we, we, we understand that.
You bet.
We understand Walter's concerns, and while the rest of us don't have the concerns as strong as his, there is some validity there, and, you know, when is it that we're going to have some of these additional partners finally stepping up and, and, and publicly saying, this is what we're gonna give?
I will, I will tell you that the two mayors are working diligently to try and get that done as quickly as possible. There are some other factors at work, timing, those sorts of things. Um, I, I fully appreciate what Walter's saying about the county is going through their budget process the same time that we're going through ours. Idaho's budget is June first to, or, excuse me, July first to June thirtieth. Pullman is January one to December thirty-first, so we're all in different budget cycles. And I would hope that, um, Latah County would anticipate that they need to be a player in this because that airport also benefits them, but I, I appreciate what you're saying. All I can say is, we're assisting the mayors in trying to get those commitments as quickly as possible.
Well, I know Walter doesn't wanna see it, this committee's going to recommend approval of the attached resolution. And this recommendation, and I'd like to go on, but this is a good-faith recommendation. This council is working on good faith, that these other partners are in fact going to step up and step up soon with a commitment.
Understood.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
I would add that, um, since Moscow and Pullman have committed to this project, that, uh, I mean, as, we're not going backwards on this, we've decided we're gonna do this, so it's a situation now where we need to all focus our efforts on encouraging these other players to step up. Because we need, we need to say that we're not gonna have a foundation and some sticks with no roof on it in four years.
Yep, and again, this, as I hope I stated in the CCR, the idea is to get the process set up. So, uh, the debate about whether to do it or not has been talked about over and over again, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. All right, the last item is, uh, from Gary again, Gary Reader presented a request to donate sheet music to Palouse Coral Society.
He knew we had it.
I know.
I didn't either. Now we know we do.
Somebody go to the basement and look, or what?
Actually, we have a, the Moscow Arts Commission Choir, uh, youth choir, which has been a staple for years, just as programs come and go, as you know, recreation programs come and go, um, Moscow's arts programs come and go. You, the fresh air concerts, I remember that when they were brand new, I remember when the Arts Commission support, and the city of Moscow supported Renaissance fair monetarily. Um, we had, used to have a celebration called Last Night, First Night, which took place on, uh, New Year's Eve. Those either stood on their own, as Renaissance has, or interest begins to wane, as in Last Night, First Night, so on and so forth. This is one of those situations where Kathleen, as you can tell in her memo, uh, has polled some of the other schools, the other organizations, there are lots of youth choirs out there now. There are lots of programs to choose from, and she feels that, um, time is best spent on some other pursuits and let these other players do those sorts of things that they do well, which I agree is a very efficient use of her time. You know, fill a void that nobody else is filling. However, we do have, and you saw the nice pictures of the sheet music, um, lots of it.
Hundreds of sheets?
Hundreds of sheets, lots of copies, and probably twenty-five years worth of music. Fortunately, music doesn't change that much, so, uh, they're still valid. Uh, I asked her where she came up with the two thousand dollars, she said, well, I think that's what it would retail at. And I said, well, I've got a car that I probably paid a lot of money for that isn't worth as much as it used to be. So, uh, as she indicated, that, that number is likely very, very high. We would've done this administratively, put a copy of the resolution in there, the surplus resolution. Uh, you delegated, uh, my office to declare surplus, I can do that. I can also authorize transfer of property to other governmental entities that we no longer need. Um, but one thing that-
To nonprofits.
Exactly, and rightfully so. In this situation, the Palouse Coral Society's a great organization, but you certainly can see that, um, you know, the council probably needs to be involved when you start taking, um, no matter what the value is of government property, even if it's worthless to the government at this point, and transferring it to a private, albeit a nonprofit entity. The reason that we did not put that in that surplus resolution was because there was a time when we would take our bicycles that, uh, the impounded bicycles that we usually sell at auction. Well, um, I can't remember the name of the organization, but, uh, came in and wanted to fix these bikes up and ship them over to Africa, the Bicycles Project, I think is what they called it. Um, and there was quite a debate that was raging about, okay, they're going to help folks in Africa, that's a great thing to do. However, is there responsibility to protect, you know, surplus property and how, who, what's the gauge gonna be? How are you gonna measure it? So at that point, the council essentially said, we think that we'll give X amount of bicycles, um, and certainly anything that wasn't able to be sold, that's gonna go for junk anyway. Um, so they preferred to keep that to themselves, and so I thought it was best to bring this back to you at this point.
And I, I don't have a problem with doing this, but I'm, I'm a little confused over the, over the fact that I believe you have the authority in the, in the two thousand eight, oh nine resolution where, and under transfer, I think, I think you highlighted it, did it come to us, highlighted, or did I do it?
Uh, I don't know.
D one B.
Yep.
It says additionally, transfer of surplus property of nominal value may be made without public advertisement or auction to a charitable organization which qualifies under section five oh one C three, which I presume the Coral Society is.
It's my understanding, although I haven't seen their five oh one C three statement.
So it appears to me from that, Gary, you could've just done this. The fact that, for whatever reason, you'd like to have us rubber stamp it, that's okay with me, too.
I prefer to think of it as having the collective wisdom of the council decide that it's the thing to do.
Bestow their approval upon it.
Exactly, a blessing, if you will.
Well, and I, and I'm, and I'm happy.
You ever think of going into politics?
Never, I would never do that.
I'm, I'm happy doing that, I would, if I may, one last thing. The resolution goes on to say, the city supervisors shall, shall submit no less frequently than once per year, a report to the city council regarding the disposition of surplus property. I remember getting that.
Yep, and I think you'll get another one the end of this budget year.
Do I remember getting it in the past year?
Uh, I don't, certainly not the last year, cause we usually do it at the end of, of the budget year. But I'd have to go back and see if we've done that or not lately.
I think the short answer is, you will be getting one.
Yeah, oh, no, you'll get one.
We will now.
Yeah, I wanna see sheet music.
I particularly like the part about weapons, but we won't go into that.
Yeah. But I think the sheet music is better off in somebody's hands being used than collecting mold in a basement.
Having a better chance of being used than not in the basement.
Exactly.
So put it on.
All right, put her on the consent agenda and we'll call it good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that is about it. Anything else to come?
No reports, we're out of business.
We're out of business, anything else?
I am, uh, impressed with how quickly you got rid of ten agenda items.
Well, don't, don't, don't think that's gonna become a habit and load us up like that.
I think we should hold the administrative committee to it as well.
Collectively, there's twenty years of experience sitting right here in these three chairs, and we know how to move through this.
And you'd be amazed at how much of this stuff came up about a day after our, uh, meeting where we decided to combine these two meetings.
This committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.